Alrighty, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Go up all please. Uh, Pasco?
Thank you.
Delway?
Here.
Jesperson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Start here. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One C, acknowledgement of open meetings act poster, poster by the south entrance above Mr. Tongish's head. One D, adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I'll say it.
In discussion, take a vote please. Motion carried for zero. Approval, one E, approval of consent agenda items.
I'm to approve the consent agenda.
Say it.
In discussion, take a vote please. Motion carried for zero. One F, proclamations and presentations. Presentation of fire and emergency service provider words to Waverly Fire Rescue members. Let's start with. Uh, I'm gonna read this first, and then I will come hand you your certificates. Tyler Tongish, firefighter one in hazardous materials operations. On December fourteenth, twenty twenty four, Tyler Tongish, a three-year volunteer member of Waverly Fire Rescue, earned his firefighter one certification from the Nebraska State Fire Marshal Training Division. On March first, twenty twenty five, Tongish earned his hazardous materials operations certificate. Eighty-six course hours for fighter fighter firefighter one, thirty-two course hours for hazardous material operations. An additional self-study hours were put into these efforts to successfully complete the class and earn the certification that meets the requirements established by the National Board on Fire Service Professional Qualifications and International Fire Services Accreditation Congress. Tyler?
Do you want me to pick?
Picture by the flag.
Picture by the flag. These are probably the stuff. I'll make sure not get them. Yeah, okay. All bags. You've got too many stripped here.
I know.
Good job. Congratulations. Alright, fire chief Ryan Mueller, fire officer one. On February twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, Ryan Mueller, a fifteen-year volunteer member and current fire chief, earned his fire officer one certification from the Nebraska State Fire Marshal Training Division, thirty-two course hours for fire officer one, and additional self-study hours were put into his efforts to successfully complete the class and earn his certification. That meets the requirements established by the National Board on Fire Service Professional Qualification and intern- earned international fire services accreditation congress. Re-requisite certifications required firefighter two, hazardous material operations, fire and emergency services instructor one. Look how proud she is at you. Do you want me to hold her, or are you good?
I don't look she.
Okay. Alright. Oh, good, she was even looking. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for all those self-study hours, hours spent on all of those, and on top of that, your jobs, your families, and the hours that you do contribute to saving this community is incredible, so appreciate it.
Am I about saying?
Yes, absolutely.
So, um, so just with this, like, say Tyler, uh, with his certification, he's our first in, in the last couple of years that has gone through the firefighter one.
Okay.
So, it's a good effort. He strive, he self-driven on that to, uh, pursue both the volunteer and try to move on to a career, so this was a good step for him, um, get this accomplished. And going forward, like, say, we'll start doing this more often when we get our certifications in the department to be a little bit more visible with the amount of hours. Um, again, done all the hours he put in self-study, but, um, the travel, because it was up in Bennington, Irvington area, so there's travel just for this course, so there's a lot of extra hours and, and just getting that done.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright, one F, I I, Arbor Day proclamation. Okay. Arbor Day proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and unify our community. And whereas Nebraska is the worldwide home of Arbor Day. Now therefore, I, Abby Elpasco, mayor of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, it's Arbor Day in the city of Waverly, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day. Support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. It is this twenty-second day of April, twenty twenty five. Alright, two public hearings, we have none, three sheriffs report. Right on time. Welcome.
Thank you, sorry I missed you last week. It has been busy, 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 busy here. Uh, good news is it's not a direct reflection of that. Safety in the, in the community, it's been some isolated things and other things. So, uh, it's one thing I'll address, it is getting nicer outside, it is nice. Good rain, good rain. Um, there was an incident in the park that had happened a couple of weeks ago that garnered a lot of attention on the old Facebook page. Um, and I think as most of us in here, um, know, we can't believe everything that we read on the Facebook page. So the sheriff actually did all he could do on that call for service. There's a fine line of us being able to contact individuals and booting them out of the park that are committing a law violation, or that people want to be a victim, or someone can sleep on a tennis court, just as much as they can sleep under a tree. And I know that got a lot of attention, but I also want citizens to know that we are patrolling the parks, we document the times that we're in the parks, Wayne Park, Lawson Park, um, you know, the community center, we walk around, check security at night. So we want people to feel safe in the parks, we want them to enjoy the parks, but I also want to share that we are giving the parks, um, a lot of attention. And you'll see me in my short bike shorts here soon again, mobile and around in the park here, I mean, I bet you can't. So, uh, we are out there, and I just wanted to clarify that out there is, you know, we're more than willing to check on people, but for me to be able to boot someone out of the park, I have to have a law violation. Even to contact somebody within a park on a call for service, we gotta kind of have a law violation. We can contact people that we want under our own accord, but to request identification, detain somebody, I have to have a criminal reason to do so. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that out there, one, but two, also, uh, we are given a lot of community attention to the areas that need it to keep the people safe from the swim season and the park season. Does anybody have any clarifying questions for me or the officer?
What was the thing with the same lights about on Easter?
Help me out, what was that one? I was hunting Easter eggs, what was going on on Easter? You got me on that one, but let's talk, I'll look into it. Alright, thank you very much, mayor. Any other questions? Dave, not you.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Dave, and I appreciate you guys' support as always.
I approved a check for you guys today.
Okay, another check coming, alright, thank you.
I wanted to just do a quick reminder, um, Saturday was such a beautiful day, I saw a lot of golf carts and different vehicles out and about. Um, so just a reminder, I want everybody that's driving them, riding on them, or anywhere, you know, and close proximity of them to stay safe. Uh, some of those just quick educational reminders are that each year it has to be re-licensed, liability insurance, um, through the city. Should stay below twenty miles an hour on city streets, um, kind of want to highlight the city street, um, item as well. Um, they've been authorized to be on the city streets and not on the highways or, or anything like that, as well as not the sidewalks or cutting through the grass through the park or, cutting through, I think it's become kind of popular too, to cut through, um, a lot of these sports go over to the swimming pool. So just a reminder that we want to keep people safe on the sidewalks, um, and not cutting through. Need to have a, a valid driver's license, um, O, uh, class license, and that's seventeen years of age, so, um, making sure that we, we don't have, or we have kids or some, um, that don't have that license, that, uh, we do have somebody operating that that does. Um, and then the number of people that are on them, and just making sure that it's by the manufacturer's recommendations or the number of seats that are available. So just wanted to bring up those things, um, obeying the, the traffic laws that, that everybody has to obey, um, just to keep everybody safe, not let somebody get hurt on one, and as there gets to be more and more and more traffic, honestly, um, in Waverly, there's just more opportunity for, um, those interactions and potential incidents true.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and we, we talk about this every year, um, partnership with Lynn Hester County Sheriff's Office, um, and discussions with that, and they have every right to, um, educate, which is what you always talk about doing. Um, but it is your main goal to keep everybody safe, and, um, if those things aren't happening, to also then hand out tickets. Because at the end of the day, as much as we have all these firefighters doing wonderful certifications, cert- I can't.
Certification.
Certifications, oh my gosh, I can't say that word today. Um, I don't want them using them on golf cart accident. So, um, that's really, that's what this is about, and that's why there are these rules. So, um, yes, we really want to make sure people are using them appropriately and safely, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? Okay. Four, public comments. I believe we have someone in the audience who would like to make a public comment at this time. Because, um, I believe you've already signed in, so if you could just state your name and your address, and then as a reminder, you have five minutes.
I'm Josh Horn, um, my address, ten seven hundred Marshall Crowell, Nebraska, straight north town here. Um, my goal is here today, my purpose is, I missed the deadline. It is thirty-first deadline to put up a firework tent, I'm trying to raise, my goal is ten thousand dollars for the cove, which is the youth group area in town. We've, uh, overrun it, we're getting over a hundred kids in there, and we're out of room. So, my daughter goes there and, um, that's a big quality thing, and I would like to put a firework tent here, I got a site already picked out in approval and permission at, over there by Waverly Denel. Um, they've done a real good job, it's a real good spot. I think it'd be real successful, um, easy access, good parking, um, good view from the road, um, that should be able to get my goal met. Um, it is my fault for being late, um, Lincoln's not for two more weeks to turn and permit, so, um, but I've got all my keys and all my dots crossed. Um, I'm partnered with Crazy Cracker, and they haven't had any incidents in fifty years of any misfires, any fires, anything, anybody get hurt on their product. So I got a good quality product that I want to sell for the town, and, uh, at a, at a, at a good, at a good price. I think I'm gonna be competitive or a little bit better than the other ones are, but my goal is to raise at least ten thousand dollars for the cove here in Waverly. Um, I've been a member of Bethland Covenant Church my whole entire life. Um, my daughter is, and she goes every Wednesday, goes to the cove, and it's, she loves it, and she gives her heart, and the youth pastor there, Tobias and his wife are absolutely amazing. And I feel that it's our job to give them the tools to help our community. I think we got a hundred and nine kids that come from Waverly there, that's besides the kids from Bethland Covenant, and we're just out of room. When I was twenty-one years old, grandpa and I, a bunch of the old guys in church, we bought the turkey farm, pantry, whatever it was in Reddens, and we fixed it up, and it's quite different than what it was. We were scooping, scooping things out, and so, and, uh, real proud of it, and, uh, real proud of the community, and I think the community would be able to give back and help, make a grow kids for kids, so. It's not taking away from the VFW, you're not taking away from anybody else, it's our community, giving money to help grow something that's really dear to this community. And, uh, we're out of room, and this sort of ensures that everybody can do their part to bring God into our kids' life and give role models and, and give them motivation and someplace to go to vent and talk to that, you know, not necessarily the kids don't want to talk to their parents, but a good safe place that they can feel free to express themselves and, and enjoy, enjoy life and take the weight of the world off their shoulders, so. I'm hoping that we can have discussions for the next meeting, see if we can put that on the menu to vote on it. Um, again, I apologize for being late, Lincoln's in two weeks, and I thought they would coincide a little bit. Um, but I do have all my ducks in a row, insurance, workers comp, uh, fireworks, transportation. Um, the only thing is, is that I'm gonna try to lock in a tent, but that's, longer it goes away, harder it's gonna get, because it's, that's the only thing, but, uh, if not, we can figure it out. So I really appreciate your all the time, and thank you for listening to me, and hopefully we can just put on the next board view.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Six, consideration of claims and financial reports.
I move to accept claims in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-five cents.
Say, say.
In discussion? Call for a vote? Motion carried for zero. Um, seven, introduction of resolutions. Just acknowledge that they're there. Sales tax reports are there for your review, and tip annual report to council is also there for review. We can approve it. We do not need to approve it if anybody had any questions or anything. So do you have any questions on report? Tip report? Seven, introduction of resolution, seven A, consideration of resolution twenty-five oh seven.
Uh, I move to approve the installation of advanced warning beacons and under pavement traffic sensor at the intersection of U.S. Highway six and non-one forty-first Street.
Say.
Any discussion? Revote? Motion carried for zero. Seven B, consideration of resolution twenty-five oh nine.
I move to consider resolution twenty-five oh nine, a resolution calling for the notes of redemption for the Aquatics Center Municipal Improvement Bonds.
Say.
Yes. And B, Mr. Forney from DA Davidson is here to answer, to kind of give us a little bit of information about these bonds, and then answer any questions you guys may have.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, to Andy Forney with DA Davidson. Uh, so you'll remember, we did these notes, uh, a few years ago for the completion of this swimming pool. Uh, these are municipal improvement bonds, and the plan was, we did a short-term financing, uh, with the plan to pay, um, all our portion of the notes down, and then roll the remainder into long-term, uh, financing. What we didn't know at the time was that interest rates were gonna shoot up. Um, so, uh, that, so I think there is some discussion to have tonight about these. Um, we wrote the ordinance, uh, that is upcoming, uh, to allow for, uh, the city to put, um, I, I think in discussions with, um, with mayor and, um, uh, Stephanie, there's about one to one point two five million that the city could put down toward these. We wrote the ordinance, uh, so that, um, uh, the Tim Mall wrote the ordinance so that it would allow for you to choose a lesser amount. Um, I do, I'm not oblivious to the fact that the city's probably earning more on its cash right now than the three point six percent interest, um, that you're paying on the current notes. The notes are not callable, or they're not due officially until December of twenty twenty-six. So we could leave these out for a little while longer, um, not any rush to, to do the refinancing. With, with that said, um, the current interest rate environment is volatile. Um, you know, the, um, at the beginning of the year, there were plans for maybe three, four, even five interest rate cuts from the Federal Reserve, um, because the, everything was pointing to inflation being under control, um, you know, the economy was what we were worried about a little bit, and so we thought maybe, um, you know, those cuts would, would provide some stimulus to the economy. Well, now, um, the, um, greater wisdom is that maybe we'll get one cut, and it's probably gonna be late in the year. Um, that's because some of the uncertainty over the tariffs, um, you know, tariffs do cause inflation, and so that, um, is a fear, um, coupled with the fear of the economy slowing down a little bit, kind of has the market doing one of these right now. So I do have issuers that are anxious to get rates locked in, um, in fear that they are going higher. Um, if, if I told you, I'd, I knew I'd be lying. Um, so, so those are kind of the things. Yeah, right? So those are the things you need to think about. Um, yes, we are earning more, I'm sure you're earning more on the, the cash. Um, so kind of the questions as I see them are, you know, do you want to save that cash for other projects? Um, do we want to wait a little while to affect the refinance, um, to see if rates come down a little bit, or at a minimum make some arbitrage on the, the cash you have? Um, you know, I think when I set these up initially, um, I was looking at them earlier today, I think at a minimum, we wouldn't want to close till July, because I'm guessing that we have, we don't have this in the budget for this year. Um, so.
We do.
Oh, you do?
We did.
Well, gosh, look at you guys, are so smart and ahead of it. Um, so, yeah, we, so then, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, it really, so those are the kind of discussions I want to have.
What is your recommendation?
Um.
We're not gonna hold you fire.
Yeah, well, so if, if you think rates are going up, which I, I kind of do, um, then I would say that, um, that we just go ahead and do the refinance, uh, with long-term financing. Um, that was the plan, and I think, I think today it's still a good plan.
Can we refinance?
Yes, and we can always refinance if rates come down. Um, you know, the real question would, where I don't think there's necessarily a right or wrong answer, is how much cash to use to pay it, to pay the notes down. I initially-
How much does that cost you to refinance? Pretty much.
It's, you know, typically one to two percent.
Hard to, dude, just gets here.
Yeah, it's just attorney's fees, I get you. Um, yeah, it's typically one to two percent of the par amount on a smaller issue, and you guys are always at the, the low end of the, like, we've been working with you for so long, you're always at the lower end of, of the schedule, so, um, fifteen thousand dollars about on a one point five million dollar bond.
And we, uh, and, but they aren't callable for five years, right?
That's right.
So we, we would have to stick, we're stick, we stay with it for five years.
That's where we get the best interest rate, is with that five-year call. Um, usually, and I, I didn't read that part of the ordinance, but oftentimes we can make the call shorter, we could do a three-year or two-year call, but what we give up is probably a little bit of interest rate.
How many years will you look at?
So I had these scheduled to be paid off, um, in the, in unison with the, the current pool bonds, um, in twenty thirty-five.
But they're ten, it's a ten-year bond.
Yeah.
So it's eighteen dollars, at five years, five possibly good years later on the road.
And in the grand scheme of things, you know, four, four and a quarter, um, is what we're predicting for rates, uh, you know, even if it's four and a half, that's, that's pretty good money right now. I mean, it, historically, it's not like the point.
Right.
Point eight we had when we, in twenty twenty, but, uh, but I feel good about all of the current debt that the city has, we refinanced all that at near all-time lows, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we do have, um, so the cash that we have left after, um, getting all of the grant money reimbursements back in, we have for sure a million dollars. We have, we could have a little bit more, up to maybe two hundred, another two hundred thousand dollars, um, that we could put towards this. So we could actually refinance it for under one, with about one point three if we wanted to. Um, and that still leaves us about five hundred thousand dollars in cash to make, you know, of room for payments on both of the bonds, because we'll have the initial bond, and then we have this additional one. Um, so we would have five hundred thousand dollars that we want to keep in reserves just for fluctuations in sales tax revenues. So if sales tax revenues start to get soft, um, and we aren't having as much money coming in to make these bond payments, we want to make sure that we have ample funds there to make the payments of sales tax revenues. So, and then passing these tonight just gives us the ability to do this.
Yeah, so this parameters ordinance will authorize the refinance in the parameter, as so long as we're within the parameters, and it says, um, in here that the city will sign off on final rates and terms, uh, I believe it's mayor, uh, city manager, and city clerk are authorized to sign off on the final, uh, numbers, so.
So you want us to decide tonight? You have a resolution for you to vote on?
Yeah, you have to vote on the resolution to report, right?
So Mark, I'm glad you asked, the, the recommendation would be to, to go ahead and proceed with the, with the refinancing, because they're doing December. Um, no necessarily, no rush, uh, to do it. Um, but these documents will allow us to go ahead and get the offering document ready, get everything ready, ordinance is good for a year, and so, um, so then at your direction, kind of, we'll, we'll watch the market, and, um, um, if something starts to go crazy, we'll, we'll inform you, um, and then you guys can let me know when you want to sell the bonds.
So right now, just by you guys passing this, if you would approve it now, it just gives us the authority to pay attention and move as soon as we're ready.
And who has the decision, final, the final decision on the amount that we pay down?
Um, I can send you that information out, and we can decide. I won't make any moves until, until.
But that money we're making good interest rate on too, but, so.
So, I'll share out that before we finalize any numbers, I'll share out the information, just now, get the-
Right now it'll be around four percent.
Yeah, maybe a little higher, four and a quarter, depending on.
So it'll be pretty close, you know, to what we're making.
Well, that's three point six is what you're paying right now, those notes were on three point six, so it's a full, wow.
No, I meant, uh, my, if you got in that.
Oh, yeah, what, what are we making on the cash, do you know?
Close to four.
Oh, just, it's magic.
Yeah, so you're making forty basis points between that three point six that we have on the notes to what you're making on, on your cash, and so, you know, it is a million dollars, that's, that adds up, so. Something to consider. The other thing is, the more you pay down, you know, because it's a percentage, um, the less you pay, you know, it's not, not a lot, but less you pay in attorney's fees and DA Davidson's fees, so, so you pay them down, and that's better for you, so.
You guys do the job.
Yeah.
They're not busy at all. Yeah. Alright. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call for a vote. Motion carries, order zero.
Thank you.
I named you.
Yeah, if anybody wants a copy of these numbers.
Yeah. Thank you.
Somebody has questions?
Thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Eight, introduction of ordinance, eight A, consideration of first reading of ordinance, number twenty-five oh three.
I move to consider the first reading of the ordinance twenty-five oh four?
Three.
Oh, three, oh, there it is. Oh, three, an ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, to rename a portion of Williams Street- Oh, three, an ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska to rename a portion of Williams Street from Williams Street to North one fifty first street.
Second.
I was thinking that was the one that she wanted to recommend.
It is.
So this one, I think, I think just for folks to know why we want to rename the street, if you guys could explain.
So, um, when Waverly went through the process of creating quiet zone in Waverly, um, the railroad required them to close, um, some at-grade crossings and this street that these folks live on used to extend all the way to Highway six and so it had crossed the railroad tracks. So this was one of the crossings that got eliminated, um, and so the city built this Williams Street and it kind of goes to the back over there where the co-op has their facilities. And so, um, anyway, they named the entire street Williams Street. It has caused some consternation because the north-south street really should be a numbered street, it should be one hundred and fifty-first street. And with the county helping with our addressing, they really recommended that we change this, this section of street to be a numbered street, and there's two homeowners on there. They've both, um, been contacted via phone and they've both gotten, um, certified mail letters, um, to describe what's happening. They've been, they've called and talked with my car zoning administrator to ask questions and so they're both well-informed on what the process is happening. So basically, we're, we're just renaming this, this little section of street to a North one fifty first street. Because their, their old address was U S Highway six, um, it's really difficult to get packages delivered and everything. When it says you're on Highway six, then you are nowhere near Highway five.
So your recommendation is third and final?
I would ask that you move to third and final reading.
Yeah, motion to suspend the rules to wait the three readings if that is your desire.
Uh, I'll move to suspend the rules to require three readings and move to a third and final reading.
Sorry.
All right, let's call for a vote on suspending the rules and move to third and final. Motion carry, four to zero.
Vote on third and final.
Call for a vote. Motion carry, four to zero. Thank you. Eight, B, consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty five oh four.
I move to consider the first reading of ordinance twenty five oh four, authorizing the issuance of long-term financing for Aquatic Center Municipal.
Sorry.
Title. In ordinance authorizing the issuance of municipal improvement refunding bonds, series twenty twenty-five for the city of Waverly, requesting the principal amount of not to exceed one million six hundred thousand dollars to pick out a, a portion of the city's outstanding municipal improvement bond, series twenty twenty-three, which were issued to pay the cost of constructing additions and improvements to the aquatic center of the city. Prescribing the form of said bonds, making certain pledges, covenants, and agreements to secure said bonds, pledging funds to be received from local sales tax, sales and use tax, repayment of the bonds, entering into a contract on behalf of the city with the holders of said bonds, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchasers, uh, provide for the disposition of the bond proceeds in order in the ordinance published in camp.
This one, you also want to make a vote?
Yeah.
One thing I, I just noticed in the ordinance, um, I intended to put a bigger not-to-exceed amount in there just in case you decided not to pay, um, the full a million.
What do you want the number to be?
I was just gonna say, if you think there's a chance that we'd pay less than a million, let's amend that to two point five.
Two point five million?
If, if you want to keep, keep our options open.
So if that is your desire, we would need a motion to strike the one point six million and insert two point five million.
I'll motion to do that.
That's amount not to exceed.
That's just a not to exceed and so that just keeps our options open, it doesn't require us to do that.
We still do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we need a second, please, we've got a first. Discussion? Okay, call for a vote on
The amendment.
The amendment, uh, changing that to two point five not to exceed. Motion carry, order zero.
Motion is now moving to third, you want a third, you want to preferably go to third and final, see if all the packets are ready to go.
I think preferably if that's agreeable, um, that'll give us flexibility to.
If that is your desire, same motion that you did last time.
Yeah.
I move to suspend the rules to require three readings and move to third and final reading.
Sure.
All right, let's call for a vote on moving to third and final. Motion carry, order zero. All right, now let's move on to their vote on third. And final. All right, call for a vote. Motion carry, four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good job, Amy.
Yeah, appreciate it. I'll leave those for you.
All right, nine, introduction of business communications, nine A, consideration of streetlight extension agreement with Lincoln Electric System.
I move to consider a streetlight extension agreement with Lincoln Electric System.
Sorry.
All right, so this is, so all of these, um, were in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the ones, uh, for the council members that were here last year. We have a list of seven spots that I think we still need to add streetlights to. Or we need to, yeah, we picked three, like a three hundred and ten thousand dollar budget item, I believe, and this was the three that Tracy thought were probably the most important and we got to that, about three hundred thousand dollar number, I believe. So yes. Yeah. Any questions on these?
It's mostly paid by, if not, right?
So we will use funds from, um, our area wide to, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think street lighting on those streets is pretty important, so.
Yeah.
This will make a big difference.
Yeah.
Totally.
I'm still not a huge fan of the North one forty-first project without an accompanying sidewalk. Um, I do have concerns that people already use that and it gets a little dangerous because they end up walking down on the street and now with streetlights, it may encourage more people to use it instead of ball parks or, or that sort of thing, so I'd like to look at, um, so some sort of sidewalk, it's, it's, it's rough because there's drainage digits on both sides, but, um, I do have a concern folks are gonna start using that more and more pedestrian-wise with the, with the added streetlight.
Anything else?
That could be good.
The budget this.
Police, police cars can see people if they're walking, if they are walking, which they shouldn't be, because they can probably see them better. It works both ways.
Anything else? All right, let's call for a vote. Motion carry, four to zero. Ten, community reports, ten, eight, human services, Allison.
Um, can I report on our, we have a new parks and rec director. So that's exciting, started yesterday. Can I say the name?
Yes, oh, ladies do, yeah.
We're excited to have Clayton here with us, managing the parks and rec. Hopefully, we're just ready to jump in at first.
Yeah, he, he is.
I met him today.
Yeah.
Chungman.
Yeah, he's, he's doing well, um, so, um, I'll say that, um, our, our previous park and rec director, um, volunteered to, uh, she offered to come in and help, um, show Clayton around, um, so, um, Shayna and myself and our assistant, um, went through all of our facilities yesterday, um, all of the parks and everything, um, so he at least got a, a review of, of where things are at, at the current state, um, and so, um, then he knows kind of where he wants to step out and, and start taking care of things. And so that was really good, um, she reviewed, you know, where things are at on the computer and kind of the systems that we're using, so, um, that went really very well. So I, I did appreciate her help with that. And so, yeah, he's taken off and we've hired, I think all of our seasonals are hired, um, Aquatic Center, I talked to Angela today and she has hired thirty-eight lighters. But we will have plenty of light hours.
That's how many, that's how many she wanted.
She's turned away some, we have more interest for more, so, so it is good, yeah, so. So, yeah, and we're, we're just glad to have.
I'm curious if you have any idea if some of those are from out of town.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I think that's really, really interesting because, uh, surrounding communities are cutting back on pools significantly. And it's, uh, it's, it's one of the few things that we have in this town that, uh, that can employ young folks, so I think that's a huge draw.
Yeah.
Have that.
Isn't, it's in their off-season sports and everything, so.
Draw more people, yeah, too.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear park and rec report.
That's okay.
I didn't even think about it, that's all right.
It's a new guy's first order of this.
I think you know him.
Yeah, I don't know why he didn't get one done.
The rooftop rumbles this weekend.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Nice two weekends.
Yep. Okay, ten B, uh, public works, Aaron.
Public works, they've been doing work on Danbury Street with the water main, um, so they've been shutting down the water main to tie it that new and in. They're currently hooking up homes, um, and that's expected to last the next couple of weeks. Soon as they wrap up with Danbury's, then they will be starting on Oak Lane and so, I guess we'll just.
You know when they're gonna be done with Danbury?
Um.
I live on that street.
It's gonna be a while.
More than two weeks.
We'll make sure to have the half of that.
Go back and do the planting of the grass.
It's one specific castor plant block. I've, I've told those guys that I'm on the city council.
I'm sure they're impressed.
Sometimes have to cut out a little concrete or, 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 or some spots in the street, so.
Big match one spot.
They are working out the tree dome with the five trees and burning those they mowed. They mowed the cemetery a couple of times, so now the grass is green, more where it are going. I'm glad to see that they took off the salt and the plow off the trucks, that means no more snow.
Clear sign, right?
Clear sign. We're starting up a UV channel at the wastewater plant, um, and they're starting to clean out the digital on Ken and get it rolling, Kenworth Old Field. And then they finished the last twenty fire, flushing the last twenty, uh, fire items, so they did four hundred and thirty total in the year.
Very good. All right, thank you. Ten C, public health, David.
Uh, so far this year to date, one hundred and seventy-three calls to service, um, month to date, they were up to thirty of those, fifty-one fire, uh, or other calls and one hundred and twenty-two of calls, so that's the predominant, uh, calls that we're getting. And the fire department is starting to test new pagers that are being purchased through the county ARPA.
All right, thank you. Ten D, fiscal economic development, Mr. Nielsen? Okay, great. Ten E, administrator, Stephanie.
We have approved one special designated liquor license for a clinical bank, um, they're having a, a business, um, after hours, um, on May eighth and they're using this space to, um, provide that to the businesses in town. We have a hazardous waste collection on May second and that's at the Methodist Church parking lot from two to six. Waverly Ridge, the sanitary sewer is completely installed over at Waverly Ridge, um, the box over are about seventy-five percent complete, so they started on the water mains and, um, they want to begin on streets and storm, storm sewers as soon as possible. So, um, there will be a lot of activity over there on any day that it's nice, so. I did receive notification from Congressman Flood's office that our request for funding, for the community project funding for the one million dollars for Oakfield Street, they decided not to fund those last year, so they've asked us to reapply, um, so I am in the process of getting that application all together, um, again. I, I feel like, um, since we did get tentatively notified for last year's award, that we hopefully will be successful this, again this year, so, um, I've been finishing that up. We also have to get our ARPA report in by the thirtieth of April and so I'm working on that as well and reaching out to residents for the test well program. And we have hired two new full-time, um, public works employees and we have our new park and rec director, so we are really close to full staff, so. Kind of excited.
And can't fit them anywhere.
But we're full staff, we're full staff.
We'll get to that. Paint out this seat.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, we're gonna take care of that.
All right, is that it?
Yes.
For you?
That is it for me.
Dave, do you have something to say?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to enter an executive session to protect the public interest, reason being a strategy session with respect to the contract negotiations and real estate purchases.
I say.
Okay, call for a vote, please.
Dave.
Motion carry, four to zero. All right, we are entered in at four, six forty seven.